And, uh, yes. Uh, hello and happy holidays. Uh, I'm, I'm just gonna start. We're just gonna go. Uh, and Happy New Year. I know that's coming up real, real quick and we wanted to sneak in here and be able to tell you what's coming up for 2017. We've got a lot of cool things that we think are, uh, that you'll like and hopefully you will. And hopefully we will be able to in 2017, I really want to make this, uh, we were talking about this before the meeting. We really want to make this the year where, um, we can talk to you more. We, or we can communicate with you more, where you can communicate with us more, where we can kind of figure out where we need to be with, uh, with all the different things going on in World of Warcraft, in the technology that we use, in all of the different Blizzard games, uh, and where our community is going and, uh, yeah, we want you to be a part of it, uh, and we invite you to do that in so many different ways. Uh, and I'll throw up the, I think this is it. Yes. Uh, so this is our email stuff. So if you ever need to get a, in touch with us via email, you can always do that at CTRofficers@gmail.com or CTRraids@gmail.com or CTRGuildEvents@gmail.com, depending on who you want to reach. If you want to reach the raid liaisons, it would be the raid email. It really is a pretty simple system, I think. Uh, but no matter what, if you have an email that you want to send, you can always send it to CTRofficers@gmail.com and we can forward on to the appropriate person or people. Uh, so that's how you get ahold of us via email. However, what I really want to talk to you today about is Discord. And, oh, before I do that, I should say tonight, we will talk about a lot of different things. Uh, first of all, I know that Tur Arts, she wants to talk about the Guild anniversary that's coming up. Four years, our fourth anniversary. Uh, it's weird. And she's gonna have a bunch of stuff that she wants to talk about. She might need your help with stuff. Uh, but that's coming up in just like a couple of weeks, guys. It's coming up, uh, what, what are the dates?
The anniversary week is January 15th to the 22nd with our actual four-year anniversary, January 20th.
There we go. So it's like two weeks away, guys. Uh, very, very exciting stuff. I love it and congratulations to you guys. Uh, thank you for making this community what it is. We cannot do this without you. Really, really. I know that, you know, during BlizzCon, it was great to see everybody at BlizzCon. A lot of people came up to me and thanked me for creating the Guild, but what I always say is that I just gave you a place. You guys made the community and you guys make it what it is every single day. So thank you for all of your hard work, all of your effort, all of your, uh, enthusiasm for what we're doing and for what you're doing, uh, because that is what makes this community strong. A little bit of a Guild switch-up that happened in the last... Jules, what was it? Like a couple of weeks?
About three weeks ago, three weeks ago.
Something like that. Uh, you may notice if you look at the Guild roster that the tune that may have been your Guildmaster, your GM for the last couple of years is no longer your GM. That's right. Instead, it's one of Jules' characters.
Gasp, an audible gasp.
So, so, uh, yes, audible gasp. Uh, but fear not, uh, folks. You know, Jules is, has been on the Iron Council since forever and, uh, I remain on the Iron Council since forever, since really forever, since four years ago. Uh, and, uh, this is an administrative, uh, switch so that she could take care of the day-to-day in-game stuff. I know that 2017 for me is gonna be extremely busy, so this is gonna be a great time, uh, to, to switch it up a little bit. And, uh, she's gonna be taking over the, the day-to-day stuff and also, uh, helping out all the department huds, uh, that we have. So, uh, yeah, but you know, Jules and I are, are a team and I don't know, not, not much is changing, right, Jules?
No, we just, we basically redistributed some of the workload and so it's, it's just, it's the same stuff. It's just that we're gonna be doing it in different, in different hands. Um, but the decisions are still being made, uh, in the way that it's always been. So nothing really has changed to you guys, but except that the Guildmaster tunes are different. And so we wanted to let you know of it because it's there, but, um, in terms of the Guild leadership, really, nothing has changed.
Not really, not really.
No.
Uh, so now we're finally moving on. Oh, wait, hold on a second. We'll also hear from Ursangus tonight. We'll also hear from Ash. Uh, both of them have some stuff to talk about, for sure, about raids and about, uh, the Welcome Committee slash greeters slash whatever else Ursangus has taken care of. Uh, so, uh, and then we have some, then Jules, you'll talk at the end about some stuff too.
Yep.
You'll finish it up since you're the GM. You'll, you'll take the, we're building up to you. That's what we're doing.
Okay, sure.
Okay. Uh, but I do want to say one thing about Discord and then I'll open it up to Tur Arts to talk about the anniversary stuff. And that is that, um, Discord is our new home for communications. It has been for a while now, but we're making it official. Uh, we are not going to be necessarily supporting Mumble uh, much if at all anymore. We are not going to be, uh, promoting it. We're not gonna be talking about it. We are gonna be talking about Discord. We're gonna drive everybody to one channel, one place, one thing, uh, that includes all of our officers, that includes all of the event staff, that includes all of the different, uh, team leaders and stuff like that. We're going to encourage everybody to move over to wherever they were, over to this channel, to this Convert to Raid main channel. Uh, we will be setting up more, uh, more like hidden channels so that people can see things. We'll be setting up more channels where we can, uh, talk about different stuff, where we can make announcements about stuff that's going on in the Guild, Guild events, your streaming information that, that you've put into the Raid Builder tool online. I want to make it a thing where we can promote your stream as well as, you know, whatever we need to do for the Guild to make sure that we have, have a strong, really super-strong community. Uh, so uh, we're, we're gonna be pushing for everybody to go to Discord. It's a great place. It's a great home. And, uh, yeah, I think that's, I think that's about it. I'm sure that you guys will have questions about, uh, exactly what's going on and we'll take your questions at the end. But for now, I think I'm going to turn it over to Tur Arts to talk about the, uh, four-year anniversary. So T, take it away, bud.
Awesome. Um, before I get to the four-year anniversary and some exciting announcements with it, I do just have a couple of event planner things to go over. Um, I am looking at bumping up staff. So if you're interested in being an event planner or have questions about it, email CTRGuildEvents@gmail.com. Pat mentioned it earlier. So just shoot me an email or you can get ahold of me on Discord. Tur Arts, T U R A R T S, pretty easy, and we will talk. The next thing I want to talk about is, and this we'll get more into as we go into 2017. We started off as a WoW community, but with the amazing things Blizzard has done with Hearthstone and Heroes and we have Overwatch and stuff, you will definitely see more events popping up that may not be 100% WoW. But it's just us adapting to our community and kind of growing as you guys grow. So if you have ideas for events or if you see things on there, um, you know, come hang out, join us. It's gonna be a lot of fun. And it's exciting, I know. Um, the anniversary, that's the big thing. We are almost at four years, guys. That is awesome. Um, we have some amazing things happening. I know Dairies has promised to do an Overwatch night on the 18th. We will have a For the Alliance on the 22nd. The anniversary, for those of you who have never been to one, this might be your first one, is a week-long celebration that we just packed full of events to celebrate how amazing you guys are. Um, you will see people, um, in the events, common names, like Pat's gonna probably help me out with some, I think I wrangled you into that before announcing it.
Sure, I'll help out with whatever, man.
Pat will be there. Um, Dairies is gonna be doing some Overwatch stuff, so you will come play with us and have a lot of fun. We're gonna be doing some amazing games. Um, and with that, we have some awesome prizes. We do a free raffle. Everyone gets to sign up and get a prize. You might get something awesome like a Sky Golem or I have that, um, Grumpus mount. You might get something like just a pet from ICC, but it's a, you know, free. So sign up for it. That'll be going out around the first of January. Um, and then we have an exciting announcement from Convert to Mythic. They are donating a Mythic Emerald, um, Nightmare Run for us.
Don't look, don't look at the text. I'm, I'm throwing up some more, some different text up on the screen. Hold on one second. I got, I got some new text for you. All right, there we go. It's a, I went to tiny URL and we shortened it up a little bit. So you guys could actually go there.
I also just tweeted it out too, so if you follow me on Twitter, which if you don't, you really should, um, I just tweeted out to you, but yeah, they are donating a Mythic Emerald Nightmare Run that will happen on the 15th at 6:00 PM server. That's when they run. All you have to do is sign up. One entry per person. Let us know the tune you're gonna bring, what guild they're in, just so we can make sure you're 110 and actually in CTR. Um, but that is amazing, guys. That's an awesome prize. Separate from the raffle that we do. Sign up for this. It's completely separate from it. But you get a chance to come in and run with them, hang out with them and get, you know, some gear, get your tune, some awesome things.
Yes.
Uh, Tur Arts, I had, I actually got a question for you if you don't mind already.
Go for it.
When is the Convert to Mythic Emerald Nightmare Run?
January 15th at 6:00 PM server.
Yes.
And, um, Taft has been the one that's been coordinating this with me, so we're gonna kind of turn it, even if you don't win, into an event. Come hang out in our Guild Discord. Talk to the people while they're running. I'm sure there's gonna be streams. At least we've been talking about it being streamed. I know there's people who can stream on that team. So come watch them, have fun, maybe wipe a little. Um, actually, I don't think they wipe. Just come watch them have fun.
No, they don't, they don't wipe.
They don't wipe. Never mind the wipes, but come watch them have fun, hang out, talk. Um, so it's kind of gonna be a great kickoff to the anniversary. Really drives home that community teamwork and respect that we are always talking about. Um, as far as what I need for the anniversary, donations are always good. I love donations, pets, um, raw materials. If you want to get fancy and do like mounts or game time or something, let me know. I know I have someone that donated, um, artwork of your choice of a character, so that's pretty exciting. We'll put that in the raffle. But donations are always welcome. You will start to see things pop up on the calendar soon for events. Um, I know there'll be LFRs. There'll be, I think a Heroes Night has been talked about, so just watch out. Sign up. The calendar is guild convert to raid.com and you can sign up with your username, which everyone should have one, so it's pretty easy, guys.
Yes. Anything else?
I think that's it. If you guys have donations, you can get ahold of me on here or Tur Arts in-game, T U R A R T S.
Yes, thank you. Uh, and, uh, we do have guys looking at Guild Chat. We have guys looking at Twitch Chat as well. Uh, Navix and Ursangus are in the Guild looking at stuff. In Twitch, we have Tur Arts and Navix is again, uh, he's Manning, he's doing double duty. So, uh, make sure to hit those guys up. You might want to actually hit them up individually in-game or in Twitch if you guys have a question, um, so that we can get it addressed. But for now, I will actually turn it over to Ash who has some stuff to talk about, uh, when it comes to raids, right?
Uh, sure, yes. Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Ashanka. I am the Raid Liaison Lead here. Um, just a few things to talk about, actually, not a whole lot. Um, just want to let you know up to this point, so we have, uh, I think it's a pretty, pretty amazing feat. We have 29 teams, almost 30 teams have completed, uh, Ahead of the Curve for Emerald Nightmare. That means killing it on heroic or higher, uh, seven of seven. Uh, we have one team, Convert to Mythic, uh, who has completely cleared Mythic Emerald Nightmare. So big congratulations out to them. That's a, that's an amazing job. They are a server third, I believe. Um, so it's pretty awesome. Um, and three teams are, have, have completed, uh, Heroic TOV for the Ahead of the Curve on that one as well. Um, so as far as, um, that goes, that's a bit of a progress report. We have several, um, several teams now still working on Mythic Emerald Nightmare and I'm really hoping that they can all get their seven of seven before Nighthold comes out in just a few weeks here. As far as news goes for, uh, the raid teams or the raid liaison department in the Guild, um, we'll be doing a, uh, an inactive team purge, uh, right around, right before Nighthold comes out so that, uh, free agents, um, don't try to apply to teams that aren't really running anymore and that kind of thing. So we'll get in there and kind of clean out the teams that have, have kind of fallen apart. Uh, we did one of those right before Legion launched, so there shouldn't be too many of them. Uh, we're also planning on doing a recruitment event again with, uh, Tur Arts' team, uh, right around the time of, um, Nighthold, so either the week before, the week after, somewhere in there. So we're hoping to get, um, some of those raiders who are looking for a new home, uh, on the team and so they can get to raiding. Uh, the only other thing I, I, I wanted to mention is we are gonna be looking at getting some of our, um, uh, some new tools for our teams or other, uh, teams, getting their tools so that they can, can, can complete what they want to do. Uh, we're, we'll be looking at, uh, doing some stuff with Warcraft logs that the Guild, uh, has and seeing about letting our Mythic teams, um, uh, kind of have some, uh, some added ways so that they can help with their recruitment so that they can do even better with, uh, with Nighthold coming up. But other than that, that's, that's about it. Um, I don't have much else to go on right now. I just know that we're looking forward to the recruitment, uh, event, uh, in a couple of weeks here and, uh, and then the Guild event, uh, the anniversary event right, right around the same time.
Yeah, it's kind of cool. I mean, everything's happening like right at the same time, so it's, uh, it's kind of a big deal, January, uh, around these parts, so I'm glad.
I like to think that Blizzard timed their Nighthold, um, launch with our four-year anniversary.
It was, it was to celebrate Convert to, the Convert to Raid Guild, so.
Yeah.
What, what better way than to actually have a new raid come out? That's awesome. Um, so I'm, I'm looking forward to, uh, by the way, yes, I want to say congratulations to all the teams that have, uh, gotten the Ahead of the Curve, uh, stuff. I haven't yet. The Ermagir Defensive has not quite done that, but we may, no, we, we're not gonna get there.
Hey, we've cleared Emerald Nightmare.
We did our part. We've done.
Well, if I remember correctly, you have until the next tier comes out and Nighthold is still part of this tier.
Yeah, no, we're not.
You guys have like seven months. You'll, you'll, you'll be good.
Oh, all right. Cool. Great. No, I think it's when Nighthold comes out that it actually goes away. I'm pretty sure. But either way, uh, let's go over to, uh, Ursangus. Uh, he is our head greeter in charge of the Welcome Committee and other stuffs. Uh, Ursangus, what's going on, man?
I'm awake.
Okay, cool.
Oh, yeah. Hi. Uh, yes, I am, I'm Ursangus. Uh, I am the guy that creates a, a yellow wall of inactive purges every month as well as leading the greeters. Uh, well, actually, that's the first thing I want to talk about, uh, inactive purges. I get a lot of questions around, uh, around the purge time. Uh, what will make you, uh, you know, able to be purged? If you're not logged in for 60 days, that's it.
Yep. It's non-discriminatory. It's, it's just a thing that we do.
Yep, yep. We gotta keep the, the Guilds clean. Sometimes we get 900-some on members and we start running out of room. So we gotta make room for everybody we possibly can. Um, greeter business though, uh, I am always looking for people who want to help out the community. Um, if you ever have any interest or, you know, what does a greeter do, send us an email, uh, CTRofficers@gmail.com. Uh, I've got something nice and prepared. You guys can always look over or just find me in-game. I'll be more than happy to talk to you about it.
Cool.
That's all I got, man.
All right. Uh, and for those, and for those guys that have been, uh, booted for inactivity, here's what you do. As soon as you, we understand this has been a very kind of alt-unfriendly type of situation. And so not everybody plays their alts, especially at the beginning of a, of an expansion, so. But if you do bring in your alt and you say, you know what, I want to play them again, let's bring them in. Oh, and then, oh, that's right, I got, uh, I got kicked for inactivity. That's cool. You just go to CTR LFO, ask to be let in and guess what? We'll let you in.
Yep, no application necessary.
No. Yeah, and, and that goes the same if you're bringing in an alt at all, ever. You've already filled out the application once. We've got it. We know it. It's one app to rule them all. So you don't have to worry about, uh, any of that stuff. So you just come on into CTR LFO. You know, you know the drill. Just come on in there and ask to be let in and, and somebody will be with you, uh, soon to, to get you into the Guild. Whatever tune it is. No big deal. Uh, let's see. I think we're, Jules, I think we're up to you.
It is my turn. Okay.
I think so.
I think so. Um, hey, I'm Jules. I'm one of the members of the Iron Council.
And GM of the Guild.
I'm, I'm still not used to that. Um, and I wanted to let you guys know about some of the things that we're working on behind the scenes, um, to prepare for 2017. I think you are really gonna enjoy that. Um, this is the year that we really want to improve communication, as very well put in the beginning of this Town Hall meeting. And so one of the things that we are going to be doing is we are going to be building a Guild newsletter going forward so that you will be informed about things going on like the Guild Anniversary Event, Raid Recruitment Events, um, if there are positions open within the leadership team, um, things that are coming up within the Guild that there, we were having a party at BlizzCon, all of those wonderful things. And we want to make sure that we can let you know about it because there are a lot of ways that we have the opportunity to communicate with each other. Um, so we are going to start this newsletter and, and it will be starting sometime in the January timeframe before the, the anniversary event. Um, I think the first thing we're also going to be doing with that newsletter is we are going to be, uh, incorporating a survey for you guys about our events. Cause you know what? We just want to know more about what you guys like, what you're looking for, what you're interested in and what you like, uh, you'd like us to help provide for you. Um, we've been doing this for four years and it's changed. Everything has kind of changed in WoW and it's not just about WoW anymore. It's about Overwatch and Diablo and Heroes of the Storm and Hearthstone. So please look out for that. If you do not want this newsletter, and I know that some people just don't like to be bothered in their email, there is the option to be able to unsubscribe to it very simply. So you can quickly unsubscribe, not get it again, um, but we would rather be able to reach you, uh, easily and let you know what's going on and you can choose whether you'd want to hear from us or not. So that's our, gonna be our big plan coming up in, uh, in 2017. And anybody who is applying to the Guild now going forward is going to be added to that newsletter once we make that switch over. So it's gonna be pretty cool. I'm really excited.
Um, and just so you guys know, it's, it's, uh, we're looking at doing once a month, maybe. So, I mean, it's not gonna be anything, uh, annoying or anything like that. We just want to make sure that you guys know about, you know, especially big picture stuff, uh, that's going on with the Guild, you know, like for the anniversary stuff. We want to let you know. We'll want to let you know that Convert to Mythic has got this great opportunity to, to tag along with them and, and hang out. Um, and we want to be able to let you know about all the great stuff that everybody else in the Guild is doing and, and, and see what's, you know, see what, make sure that you are aware of that. Cause you know, some people have said, like, when we did the Kickstarter for the, for the party last year for, at BlizzCon, we had people that said, well, I didn't know about it.
Right.
Oh, well, let's make sure you do. Otherwise I would do it. I totally would have given money, blah, blah, blah. Well, all right. Now you don't, won't have that excuse anymore because now you'll be on the newsletter. So there you go.
And we will be having a party for BlizzCon in 2017, just so you know. Um, so it will be happening. Yeah, that is the plan, so, uh, you can hear from it right now.
Jules, it's, we've been, we haven't thought about BlizzCon for at least two months now. Well, not, not quite two months. Yeah, a month and a half. We haven't, we haven't been in the LA area for a month and a half and we're already talking about BlizzCon 2017.
Uh, it's always the way that it works. So, yes, uh, and so, yeah, we, we're, we're excited. We are, um, and as it always is, we really.
Did you see what Ash said? Ash said, I'm always thinking about BlizzCon. I, you know, I, we are too. You're too.
We kind of are. It's kind of weird. Um, the other thing we wanted to just, uh, kind of reiterate as well is that, uh, we want to hear from you guys. And like I said, 2017 is gonna be the year that we increase our communications and that goes both ways. So we want to hear from you guys, not just if you have a problem or a question, but if you have a suggestion, if you have something that you want to bring to us. We have the emails up on the screen on Twitch right now, CTRofficers@gmail.com. That's how you can tell us what's going on in your heads. If you, if you had a great experience with one of our officers, let us know that too, cause then we can give them virtual hugs and they like virtual hugs.
Who doesn't?
Who doesn't? All right, I'm done.
All right.
I'm done.
All right. Uh, well, then I will just, uh, sum up what we talked about. So we talked about Discord. Discord's the wave of the future. Uh, and so we are gonna be promoting that, uh, in all the Guild information, uh, stuff. We're gonna take out all the Mumble stuff. We're gonna, we're gonna put that, uh, we're gonna replace that with Discord stuff because we think it's just, you know, such a better way to go. Uh, so be looking for that. We have the anniversary coming up in a couple of weeks. If you're interested in helping out Tur Arts at all, you can, I'll put the, uh, email up again. Uh, it is CTRGuildEvents@gmail.com. And, uh, Ash also talked a little bit about what's coming up for the raids and, and, uh, Nighthold and all that kind of good stuff. And so if you have any questions, if you're, if you're a team leader and need to contact, uh, the raid liaisons for whatever reason, you can always, uh, email them at CTRraids@gmail.com. Otherwise, you can always, uh, give us a, uh, an email over at CTRofficers@gmail.com. Uh, and, uh, yeah. And Ursangus, you talked about, uh, a little bit about what happens every 60 days. If you're, if you're not doing anything, mm, sometimes bad things can happen and, and people fall out of the Guild and then they need to be re-invited. It's true.
I'm a popular belief. I don't like doing it.
Nobody likes doing it, but it's something that needs, we gotta, you have to prune, uh, the, the, the Guild a little bit in order for it to grow. Stronger, better, whatever. That's what I'm saying.
Faster, stronger.
Yes, all that stuff. So now it's time for your Qs and then our As. Uh, so if you have a question, please hit up either Navix or Ursangus in Guild Chat. Uh, you can also hit up Tur Arts, uh, in, uh, in Twitch or Navox again in Twitch. So I don't know if you guys have any, are fielding any questions right now, uh, or anything, just let, just pop in and let's see what's going on.
Uh, I'll, I'll, you know, while I wait for questions to come in, uh, yeah, uh, why don't we cover the traditional Town Hall questions? We always.
Okay. All right. Uh, which one first? When, when is the Horde Guild coming?
Yeah.
Soon, soon TM, meaning never. Uh, when is the EU Guild coming? Uh, never. No, that's not, that's not a thing. We want everybody to play together, so we, we only have one Guild. That's the way it goes. Uh, the.
Tor 10.
Uh, what's, what's another commonly asked question?
CTR LFG.
Oh, CTR LFG? That is not a channel we can control, so, uh, disregard the trolls. So it's a public channel. We can't do anything about it.
That's why we're using Discord now. Yay.
Right. And so now, uh, we can use the in-game stuff. We can always use that stuff. But now we'll have, uh, the CTR, uh, LFG in Discord. And that's for any game. That's, that's for whatever you, you guys are playing. If you're playing, uh, sure, Rocket League. If you're, and you're like going, hey, anybody want to go for threes, uh, in Rocket League? Sure. Why not? Uh, but probably mainly WoW and a little bit of Overwatch and maybe some Hots, especially right now if you guys want to get the, uh, the cool, uh, skin for Genji and what else do you get? Zarya. What did we, what did I get today?
Portrait.
I got this today.
You got a portrait and Hots. You got the Genji skin and in Overwatch and you got the Zarya character.
Zarya. So, yeah.
I do have a couple of questions.
Okay, T.
Number one, many of the raid teams have created their own Discord servers to keep in touch with their teams. Is trying to get those teams back in the CTR Discord an additional aim of the Mumble Discord change?
Not really. I mean, we understand that teams will always have their own. Not really. I mean, we understand that teams will always have their own Discord and, and we appreciate that. And that's totally cool. Um, however, I do want, uh, team leaders to be a part of CTR, the CTR Discord. That is, that is definitely a goal. Um, number one, because that's where, uh, Ash is gonna live and his team are gonna live. So it's a great way to contact those guys if you need something quick, you know? Uh, and also because we will have this LFG system and I really want it to be, uh, cooking along. So if you're looking for a pug, you know, there are a few places to go now. So in-game and in Discord. And outside of your own team Discord. So. Yep.
Yep. And it, we're, we're not, we don't want you to break up your own team Discord. That's not the intention at all. Um, and so we want to create a home for everyone on, on one centralized, uh, server. I mean, uh, Pat and I, our raid team is on a separate Discord because there's no need for it to be on the main one.
No.
But when it comes to team play, team recruitment, you know, community, that's what we're looking for.
Yep. That's it. All right. T, you said you had more than one?
Yes, um, a quick one. Can we link the CTR Discord in chat real quick for those that don't have it? So Jules or Pat, perfect. Um, another question, will guild events be posted on the in-game calendar? Um, this is something we have fought for a while. It's just no good way that I've found at least to link the calendars. So you have to log into each one and post it. And then if someone has to sign up, well, who signed up first? So it's not something we actively do. It's on the guild convertersay.com calendar. Um, that's really easy to sign up. And if I only have 20 slots, I can limit it to 20 slots. So at this time, no, there's not really something that we can do. It's just too difficult with 10 guilds.
Imagine that. Things get more complicated when you have 10 guilds that all come together.
It does.
Imagine that. Uh, any other questions out there? Ursangus, Nav, got anything?
Nope. I've got, I don't have any. I've got some silly ones.
Okay.
Uh, do the greeters finally get that pay raise? Uh, yes. As a matter of fact, they do. They get, uh, 5% on top of whatever they're getting paid right now.
Right. That's right. That's what they get. Uh, T, anything else from Twitch?
Not that I have.
Okay.
There's one that just popped into the guild, uh, chat. Where should I make sure I'm up to uploading my Warcraft logs to? Or does a raid officer handle that?
I think that's for me, right?
I think.
All right. So, um, give me just a second here. Uh, as far as Warcraft logs goes, what, how we've been handling it from now for, or for the time being is that basically every team has their own thing. Um, the, the problem is that Warcraft Logs uses like the guild that they're in as their identifier. So they have, uh, a little, it's a little tricky because you'll have multiple teams in the same one. Everybody can upload it. Uh, you just have to basically create an account there. Uh, and you can upload it and it will pull the, um, the players that, that were in your run with the log. Um, so that it can upload that. It'll be listed under the guild. And I, I believe there's a way, there's, there's a name that you can, um, you can upload it, but it'll basically be uploaded as personal logs. Now we're looking into finding ways to, um, adjust that so that teams can upload them. Uh, like I mentioned in, uh, in the, in the news part earlier is so that it, it'll help a lot with recruiting, especially for the higher end teams that are, uh, kind of trying to recruit outside of the guild. Um, so as of right now, I believe that the only way to do it, it would be to upload them as personal logs. And it'll just have the, the main guild, uh, that you're in, or the co-guild that you're in listed as the, um, uh, the guild for the, uh, for the log.
We may be changing some stuff around a little bit, um, when it comes to that for some of the, um, we're, we're kind of trying to figure out how we can take care of mythic teams as well. And so if you're, uh, if you're in one of the mythic teams, uh, this is something that we want to make sure that we're giving you all the, all the right tools to make sure that you guys can be happy and healthy and, and promote your team and, and recruit and all this kind of stuff. So I, I know that the, it's going to involve maybe some stuff with Warcraft Logs and, and other things. So, uh, we're trying to figure out exactly what you need and, and how we can give it to you. So just, just know it's in the background. It's in the background right now. Uh, any other questions popping up?
Uh, 11th Co-Guild. That's, that's what we haven't heard for a while.
So 11th Co-Guild is a possibility. However, uh, it's not necessarily going to happen just because we can. Um, now that we have 12 character slots, I mean, the, the biggest thing is always like, you want to make sure that whoever is GM, right now it's Jules, but you know, it could, that tomorrow it could be Ursangus. Who knows? Probably not, but.
Don't joke about that.
But I mean, whoever, whoever is GM of the guild, I, I think they need one character slot so they, they can move stuff around for themselves. You know, just they want to, you want to be able to deal with the guild on one account and always have room to be able to switch stuff around, um, if, if you need to. And so that means that an 11th is possible now. Is it probable? Not in the near future. Um, but if we are hitting, you know, 9,500, uh, characters in each guild and it's sustained for a while and we're approaching the, the, you know, really, really red line of, of being able to let people into the guild, then that's something to consider. But I don't think it's, uh, we're not there yet because we just did a purge, uh, and a lot of people, a lot of alts were lost in this last one. What was it like? What was it like 1,500 or something like that?
It's some crazy number, almost 1,000 people.
Super crazy, crazy high number. And it's like, oh wow, that really dropped off nice. Uh, but that's because, you know, again, it's, it's this, it's Legion and not being very alt friendly, or at least, you know, not right now. It'll get better. So we'll see. We'll see. Uh, anything else?
Yes, I have two questions. Um, Jay Falcon asks, any chance that raid teams can get a text channel on the CTR Discord for recruitment purposes rather than web forums by individual team name? I think we're looking into different things with Discord once they start updating stuff.
So, so one of the things that I, I want to make sure that we do is we, um, we give the team leaders a role, which means that you get a different color for your name, which is, uh, always nice because then you stand out a little bit. Um, but I think that for regular recruitment, um, just using the LFG channel that's in there right now, uh, should be okay. If it's not okay, we can always kind of look at, look at that stuff. But I think for now anyway, um, the LFG channel that's in there should be a good start to how, uh, for people to recruit or to pick up pugs or whatever. So.
Oh, I got another question in.
And, oh, hey, yes, that's a great, that's a great, uh, I just saw a thing pop up where, uh, what is it? Wigs?
Will, Will.
Will.
Will GSX.
Yeah. Will said he might be able to do a recruitment bot for Discord. If you, if you're familiar with bots and for Discord, uh, talk to me. Just hit me up in Discord.
Yes.
And we'll, we'll chat because I have many things that I want to do with Discord, but I just don't have any.
We have ideas.
I don't have any programming prowess at all. I'm a total, uh, incompetent person when it comes to that stuff. So, uh, Ursangus, sorry to cut you off.
No, no, this is actually, I'm interested to hear this one. What does MVP stand for in the CTR Discord?
Got it.
Uh, what would you like it to stand for? That's, that's a better thing. What would you, what, what do you think it stands for? Ursangus, do you have, do you have a particular?
Uh, I'm kind of leaning towards most valuable potato.
Okay. All right. All right. I, I, I see that suggestion. No, you know, right. Uh, I was just doing something fun for, you know, for the Discord and I, I decided to make people green at one point. I'm like, I gotta name this role something. I'll just name it MVP. Kind of like the forums for WoW. But.
Pat has been very, very cryptic about that role since it got created. So we were, we did a little experimentation, um, cause as you guys know, if you've gone onto the WoW forums, there are forum MVPs out there, right? So that's what we were working on emulating with it.
Yeah.
So the word, the secret is out. It's, it's Discord MVPs.
Cause I, cause I let the secret out. Yes. Yes. But I just started turning people green and they were like going, what is going on? Why am I green? I'm like, I don't know. You talk too much. Now you're green. There you go. So, uh, what else is going on? Any other, any other good questions out there? Most viral packages. I like that one. More viable pies. Yes, T.
Um, this one just asked for, it's a question that I'm going to answer differently than the question. Um, any chance of us doing like attunement runs for, um, cars on Karazan? And my answer to that is fill out the questionnaire we're going to have coming out because especially with Warlords and transitioning to Legion, it's hard to peg what you guys want for events. So if that's stuff you want, these smaller groups, I need to know about it. So it's definitely something we can look at. I just need to know there's an interest for it because nothing hurts, not hurts, but stinks more than playing an event and only having, you know, one person or sometimes no people show up to something you thought was going to be a success. And so.
I, I do think, uh, T, that one of the things that people are gonna want, I mean, other than structured events is just people available to do stuff with. And we've seen great success with the COD Squad and they're, uh, a great band of folks and they're always doing stuff. Um, and so if you guys, uh, want to do stuff, uh, I would suggest using the LFG channel in, uh, in game, talking on Guild Chat and stuff like that, because we have, uh, most of the COD Squad members are in the guild. So if you want to do stuff like that, say, hey, anybody wanting to do any, you know, attunement runs or whatever? And I'm sure that somebody will jump in and say, oh my gosh, this sounds like a great idea. This sounds absolutely perfect. But use that, use, and I'm hoping that the LFG channel in the Discord, in our Discord will be like that as well. So, yeah, I mean, I, I do think that there, that there's a thing for, there are people that really like structured events and then there are people that really like kind of more unstructured pug runs of stuff. So, so, yeah. So there. And yeah, the Karo group thing is hard because it's only five people.
Right.
So.
Yes, it is.
So that's, that's super hard for, uh, Tur Arts to be able to respond to. But I, I would love to see stuff like that happen, uh, no matter what. This is the stuff we want to encourage you guys to do. Oh, hey, we have another question. Uh, do we have to start calling you Queen Jules of Azeroth now?
Uh, only if it's prefaced with hey you.
Hey, you. All right. You heard it here. You heard it here. Uh, anything else?
Asked if I was going to be ruling with an iron fist. I'm only getting it bronzed. So we're go, we're okay.
Oh, there you go. Bronze fist. Hmm.
Bronze fist, not iron.
That sounds even, even worse. Uh, all right. Well, I think what we'll do is we'll, we'll call it there for this particular stream. Uh, what I'm going to do is in about, like a few minutes, I'm going to get some water. I'm going to hop into the general chat channel. So if you actually have a question, I will be in the general, uh, let's see, what is it? I'm going to jump to, wait, I gotta scroll down. Um, I will be in uh, Derry's Dance Party. That, that particular voice channel. So if you have a question, you can hit me up in Derry's Dance Party. I'll be there for a little bit and answer your questions, uh, chat with you and all that kind of good stuff. All right? Sound good? Great. Uh, anything else from any of the people that can actually talk on this channel?
Twitch is good.
Nope, we're good.
Okay.
Nothing here.
All right.
I'm good.
Sounds good. Well, I hope you guys, uh, found this informative and, uh, all that kind of good stuff. And we will see you on the next, uh, CTR Town Hall, probably in a couple of few months. So, uh, Happy New Year. Again, happy holidays, uh, everybody. We hope you had, have had a great December and a great last part of the year. And now we move into 2017 where things will be happy, bright and shiny. Right? Right. See you guys later. Bye.
Bye.